Sorry to be a little tardy. We had a lot of activity this morning. We want to start, we have our quorum. I'd ask all guests and visitors if they would please retire behind the rail. We can get going. To give our own vacation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Sean Hiska from the Presbyterian Church in Kensington. He is here today as my guest. I would ask all members, guests, and visitors to please rise.
Good morning and peace be with you. I want to thank the council for this honor and in particular, Council President for coming before you this morning. Let us now go to God in prayer. Let us pray. Oh loving Creator God, we come before you this morning asking for your presence to be upon your servants here who serve this great city of Philadelphia. You created all of us, oh God, in your image and in your likeness to do good, to love you as our God and ultimately to truly embody that radical love and sharing it with all of your creation, especially with our fellow brothers and sisters. Oh God, I lift up these servants of yours gathered here today that they may be granted your wisdom to discern what is not only best for the city, but what is right and just in your eyes. Give them guidance in their discernment and peace and understanding in their disagreements to seek the good for all Philadelphians so that we can continue to be a beacon to a broken world showing what true brotherly love looks like. Strengthen, oh Lord, their collective resolves to end homelessness and help all of our citizens have a place to call home, to ensure all Philadelphians have access to healthy and nutritious food, to strengthen all of our youth and guarantee that they receive the highest quality education and opportunities that they deserve, to protect and provide care and support services for all of our seniors, to eradicate guns and drugs and get them off of our streets, to preserve our land's history and green spaces, and to continue to open our city borders and provide radical hospitality for all visitors and new residents and in particular, those seeking sanctuary. Lord God, allow your illuminating light to shine upon the work about to be done here today. In the power of your holy name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much Pastor. Council be at ease. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, November 16th, 2017, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, November 16th, 2017 be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, November 16th, 2017. Stand and approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. The next order of business is requests for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, there are no requests of leave of absence today.
Chair thanks the gentlemen. The Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair thanks the gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business and I would like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. We genuinely appreciate you coming down. We hope your stay here today is a knowledgeable one, but more importantly, a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. So again, thank you so much for your participation in today's session. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones, who will present a resolution recognizing Rhonda Willingham, President and Founder of Men's Fit. With Ms. Willingham and those accompanying her, please join the Councilman at the podium. And we have this runway presentation. And joining Councilman Jones, we have Councilwoman Blindell Reynolds Brown, Councilman Green, Councilwoman Gimm, and Councilman Heenan, Councilman Taubmanberger.
Yes, you up here, right?
And Councilwoman Kionna Sanchez.
So you can learn a lot about your colleagues when they're exercising their alter egos on the runway. Cardi G back here who won, all of them who participated motorcycles and you learn a lot about your colleagues when you do these kinds of charitable events. And I wanted to thank all of them who participated and who wore it best on the runway and those who came who did not participate on the runway but contributed with their treasury such as President Clark, such as Councilwoman Blackwell, who is a champion for homeless people, and also Councilman Dom, who is a kinder, gentler capitalist who cares about poor people. So I want you to know, ladies and gentlemen, it is not about who wore it best. It is about who needs it the most. The day before we did our affair, Councilman Johnson did a workshop and hearing on gun violence prevention. At that, we took a deeper dive into some of the causes of gun violence and at its core is poverty. At its core are people who do not have jobs. So the day of the fashion show afterwards and we all at a hoopla, the next morning, me and Captain Jack Jones, who is my dog, do our constitutional walk in the morning. And I was reminded why it's not about who wore it best, but who needs it most. I ran into a young man at 53rd and Euclid. He was posted up, and for those of you who don't know urban vernacular, that means he was standing on a corner with his colleagues. He was there and he said, Congressman Jones? I said, no, 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 Councilman. And so he pulled himself away from his colleagues, pulled me to the side, and his head was on a swivel, which means he's constantly an alert of any danger, police or competitors that he has. You could always tell one of those boys, right, Mr. Councilman Johnson, when their head is on a swivel. So he says to me, he does not like his lifestyle, but he felt trapped, that he worked a minimum wage job for long hours, had two children, and at the end of the paycheck, he had just enough maybe to buy clothes or food and felt as a man, head of his household, less than. And I looked him up and down, you know, my head on a swivel because I'm at 7:15 in the morning hanging out with these guys, noticed that he was poorly dressed, missing a tooth, pants hanging down, and it wasn't that he was dressed down because so was I. It was that he didn't know. He was unaware of his dress and how in an interview, that is totally unacceptable. So that's why I support Men's Fit. Because if you don't know what you don't know, you can't do better. If you don't know not to dress for the job you have, but to dress for the job you want, you'll never get there. So Rhonda Willingham has done this for 10 years straight. She deserves our support. Those young men, those 1,200 or so that she has saved deserve our support, and it's not about who wore it best, it is about who needs it most. So therefore, recognizing and honoring Rhonda Willingham, President and Founder of Men's Fit, for aiding in the employment of thousands of men across the city of Philadelphia, hosting the annual City Council Who Wore It Best Fashion Show. Whereas Men's Fit is a nonprofit organization that strives to influence positive change within community by providing financial literacy and career development services among, along with professional interview attire. This mission is to assist low-income men with long-term rewarding employment and...
Now I'd like to congratulate this year's winner, Councilman Curtis Jones.
And Councilwoman Gimm.
Although the people may say something different. Whereas the organization originated in Washington DC in 2001. In June of 2007, Men's Fit opened a location in our city of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness. The Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency noticed Men's Fit's advocacy endeavors and funded their move to Philadelphia with a $250,000 grant and...
Whereas, Men's Fit was founded by Rhonda Willingham, a Philadelphia native. Before starting the organization, Willingham worked at the Department of Labor with the Clinton-Gore administration. Serving as an employee, Willingham had a focus on public affairs and community outreach. She is a recipient of Philadelphia's own WDAS FM Radio's Women of Excellence Award, and she was named a local hero when receiving Bank of America's Neighborhood Excellence Award. And whereas in Philadelphia, Men's Fit has helped more than 6,100 men compete for jobs which have created almost $54 million in taxable income. The organization is not only a nonprofit, but a movement to support underrepresented men living in low-income inner cities and helping them realize and exercise their greater personal liberty and...
Whereas, Men's Fit offers workshop series with various focuses such as business etiquette and communications, diversity awareness, and tips on how to get through an interview with ease. Their wide range of services allows clients to excel in the professional world while obtaining self-sufficiency and the winner of the ladies. The ladies champion on fashion.
Is Helen Gimm this year. Whereas, Men's Fit also hosts several events across the city to raise money to aid in their efforts to get men employed. One of those events is, as you've already heard, Who Wore It Best, a wonderful entertaining evening. Fashion show that features models from Philadelphia City Council. Men's Fit 2016 Fashion Show featured our council members Jones, Green, O, Squilla, Heenan, and Councilman Johnson. The 2017 Fashion Show did feature styles from the Women of Philadelphia City Council. And to the 2017 winner, Councilwoman Gimm.
Whereas, job hunting is extremely challenging for most people. However, it is more demanding when a job applicant lacks confidence or is unable to present what is considered an acceptable business image for employment. Men's Fit has proven to be the leading Philadelphia organization of its kind by taking an active and innovative role in assisting the underserved population, especially in this increasingly competitive job market. Now therefore be it...
Resolved by the City Council of the City of Philadelphia that hereby recognize and honors Rhonda Willingham, President and Founder of Men's Fit, for aiding in the employment of thousands of men across this city and for hosting the annual Philadelphia City Council Who Wore It Best Fashion Show, which I did not win. Further be resolved that in a gross copy of this resolution be presented to Rhonda Willingham and Men's Fit as further evidence of the sincere admiration and gratitude of this legislative body. And the Chair recognizes Ms. Willingham for remarks.
Wow, this is exciting. As many times as I have come to City Council meeting, I never thought that I would be standing up here in front of you to talk about something that's very, very dear to my heart, is actually my ministry, which is Men's Fit, and I'm so thankful and thrilled and grateful, and I know that I speak for the rest of the team and the members of the Board of Directors for Men's Fit when I say thank you, not only to the City Council members here that participated this year and last year, also I want to thank Council President Darryl Clark. I want to thank the mayor, he also came to our event and is also a supporter of ours. So I wanted to make sure that I recognize everyone. Kenyana Johnson has been just a wonderful advocate for Men's Fit, and I'm looking forward to working with those council members that I have not built an intimate relationship with, but I'm looking forward to doing that as we move forward into 2018. We've got a lot of things planned for next year, and you've heard from the council folks on the stage about the number of men that we've suited, the number that we've helped. The guys that we work with come from homeless shelters, they come from job training programs, they come from welfare-to-work programs, some of them are veterans, but a large majority of our clients are returning citizens, and that's a population that most people typically don't work with, and it's been difficult for them to get a second chance. We talk about a second chance, but in all actuality, it's very hard for them to get employment. So one of the focuses of our program for next year is that we will be focusing heavily on the returning citizens. So we're looking at doing some things within the Department of Corrections where we will actually be going into some of the state correctional facilities and starting our workshops 60 to 90 days before gentlemen are released so that we can give them, so we really can give them a hand up and not a handout as they prepare to leave prison. So we're excited about that, and I'm just thrilled to be here. I just, I'm a little girl from West Philly, born and raised. So when I started Men's Fit back in Washington, one of the first cities on our expansion tour was obviously my home city, Philadelphia, and I'm so happy, I'm thrilled. Thanks again to everyone up here for honoring Men's Fit and really recognizing the good work that we do. So we are, we all are our brother's keeper. So thank you very much.
Council be at ease. Quiet, please. Thank you, and again, congratulations. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson, who will present a resolution honoring the Philadelphia Sunday Sun with Joseph Mondesire, Catherine Hicks, and those accompanying them, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Johnson, we have Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilwoman Bass, Councilman Green, and Councilwoman Blindell Reynolds Brown. And Councilwoman Gimm.
Shout out to your folks. It was 1996. I had just graduated from Mansfield University, receiving a degree in criminal justice with dual minors in philosophy and sociology, and made a personal commitment to come back to my neighborhood of Point Breeze, South Philadelphia, to improve the quality of life for the neighbors of which I grew up with. And I had an opportunity to, one day while I was doing some volunteering political work, saw a young man who had slick hair and a cowboy hat on and some cowboy boots and saw him speaking truth to power about the issue of police brutality. This is a gentleman who advocated for criminal justice reform before it was the progressive thing to do. This was a gentleman who advocated around the issue of youth gun violence before it became a slogan, and so today I am truly honored and privileged to recognize and honoring the life of Jerry Wyatt Mondesire and the founding of the Philadelphia Sunday Sun for his 25th anniversary. He was a social activist, a civil rights activist, and always advocated for all things regarding social justice. And so if you knew Mr. Mondesire, either you was his friend, or you didn't definitely want to be on the other side of being one of his enemies. And so I had the good pleasure of being one of his friends and having a chance to learn some of his wise counsel during my run for City Council, when he invited me up to the radio station a couple of times and would give me some insight around why it was so critically important that I continue to make sure there is a voice for those who I was going to be representing when I arrived in City Council, those who needed a voice in the Second Councilmatic District. And so the resolution reads, honoring and recognizing the Philadelphia Sunday Sun and its founder, J. Wyatt Mondesire, on the occasion of the Sun's 25th anniversary...
And whereas the Philadelphia Sunday Sun is a weekly newspaper dedicated to covering local and national stories that impact the African-American community in Philadelphia, since its founding in 1992, the Sun has grown into a nationally respected news outlet while staying true to its mission of connecting Philadelphia's African-American community and... Whereas, the Sun was the brainchild of J. Wyatt Mondesire, who owned and played an active role in the paper's publication until his death in 2015. Trained as a journalist at the City College of New York, Mr. Mondesire joined in the historic 1969 campus takeover that sought successfully to increase diversity in the college's enrollment. After college, Mr. Mondesire began his professional journalism career with the Baltimore Sun, where the quality of his work garnered increasing national attention and earned the young journalist a position within the Philadelphia Inquirer. After his arrival in Philadelphia, Mondesire became a leading voice for diversity within the city's newsrooms, helping to co-found the Philadelphia Association of Black Journalists in 1973 and...
Just wanted a point of privilege to say to his beautiful wife and son, as an Asian-American woman in Philadelphia, Jerry Mondesire was a mentor, a friend, a fellow warrior who exhorted and embraced so many diverse people into the civil rights movement and into building a broader message. Whereas, after several years covering local politics and rising to the rank of Assistant Editor on the Inquirer City Desk, Mr. Mondesire accepted a position with Congressman William H. Gray III, eventually serving as the Congressman's Chief of Staff. Mr. Mondesire became involved with a variety of political and social causes, notably working to craft the bill that levied sanctions against South Africa's apartheid regime and...
Like many of the people up here, I remember my good friend Jerry and his 7:30 AM calls, often when I was actually calling him back when I was taking my son to school. And so a few years ago, I had the opportunity to purchase one of his hats during a Philadelphia Association Black Journalist auction, scholarship auction. So I keep his hat in my office as a reminder of his 7:30 calls. Yeah, I've never, never... So whereas after Congressman Gray's retirement in 1991, J. Wyatt Mondesire began again to channel his passion for community activism through his work in journalism. In 1992, Mondesire founded the Philadelphia Sunday Sun as an outlet for news and opinions that impacted the city's African-American community and...
Whereas, as the city of Philadelphia joins the Sun in celebrating its 25th anniversary, the paper continues to build upon the legacy of its founder, J. Wyatt Mondesire. Today, the Philadelphia Sun remains to be one of the most impactful news outlets in the city of Philadelphia and serves as a model for African-American-owned and operated newspapers across the country. Now therefore... Now therefore know that Jerry was also a father, and I got to know him well when he would come to pick up his little daughter Jennifer from the dance class where she was one of my students. So his social justice and his deep love for his children was really unparalleled. And with that, we resolve that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby honors and recognizes the Philadelphia Sunday Sun and the rich legacy of social justice its founder, J. Wyatt Mondesire leaves on the occasion of the Sun's 25th anniversary.
Good. And the Chair recognizes Mr. Mondesire and Ms. Hicks for remarks.
Thank you. Boy, I tell you, hearing all that, it just brings back a lot of memories. But I want to thank Councilman Johnson for this opportunity, all of council, Council President. I'm just so humbled. On behalf of our staff and management of the Philadelphia Sunday Sun, we are just so thankful to receive this. We are humbled and really thankful. 25 years, that's a long time. Jerry started this paper as a voice of the community. He wanted the opportunity to tell the stories of the community through the paper, to give that opportunity to all the neighborhoods that may not have that opportunity in mainstream news media. So we strive to continue to do that. I will strive, along with his son Joseph, who is here... I will strive, along with his son Joseph, who is here along with me, to ensure that your stories continue to be in our paper. We ask that you continue to support us. I thank all my family and friends and our Sun staff who is here standing with us, but we ask you to continue to support the paper through subscriptions, through advertising, and through just letting us know what stories you want told. Thank you.
Good morning. Twenty-five years, that's a long time to be putting up with that man. So, I understand. I'm first and foremost grateful to the staff because, you know, I mean, I know y'all were doing it for a check, but I mean, that's still a long time and a lot of patience that you had to deal with, that you had to persevere through. So, I'm first and foremost grateful for you all, and I'm also grateful for the people that buy this paper and read this paper on a weekly basis. If it weren't for y'all, we wouldn't be up here. There would be nothing to acknowledge if people didn't spend that money and that time investing in what we presented as a paper and as a media outlet. So I'm truly grateful. Again, I'm humbled as well, eternally, and I really can't thank everyone enough for this opportunity. And I really owe it to y'all to keep this paper going and to grow it, because one thing that I've learned throughout this time is that accuracy and timeliness are truly essential to being a successful media outlet. So that's what we're going to continue to strive for, and I mean, that's what it is. So, thank you very much.
Council biddies. And again, congratulations. Thank you. The next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests. We have one more? Okay. We appear to have an additional presentation. Okay, thank you. We have one more presentation. And we'd like to recognize Councilman Dom, a resolution recognizing Bud, Bernard Bud Newman. Ask Councilman Dom to please come forward. And joining Councilman Dom, we have Councilwoman Gimm, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Parker, Councilman Taubenberger, Councilwoman Bass, Councilman Green, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman Heenan, and more importantly, Mr. Newman.
I'm going to start off by just saying, we're honoring today Bud Newman, who really has done an amazing job as president of the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia. And when I thought about Bud, I looked up a quote that I remembered from Winston Churchill that he exemplifies, and that is, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give."
Yes.
And what you're going to hear today from all of my colleagues is how much Bud, Judy, his children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren have given, including a fact that he probably won't tell you, and that is that as a past president of the Jewish Federation, him and his family have made the largest endowment eight-figure gift to the Federation to help others in Philadelphia. Pretty amazing, pretty amazing. So let me start with a resolution recognizing and honoring Bernard Bud Newman, immediate past president of the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia, for his stewardship to the organization and his service to the Jewish community of Greater Philadelphia.
And whereas, for more than a century, the Jewish Federation has worked tirelessly to convene the community, encourage and steward the generosity of donors, and make grants to meet critical needs. And?
And point of personal privilege, I want to congratulate Bud Newman. They happen to be a business owner and long supporter of the residents and underserved communities of Northeast Philadelphia for many, 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 many years, employing those who need it and deserve second chances personally, personally firsthand in his selection of employment opportunities. And I want to thank him and Judy because that leadership has demonstrated how he operates as a successful business owner, landowner, and part of the community in Northeast Philadelphia, whereas the Jewish Federation serves vulnerable populations, facility community engagement, and promotes Jewish life and learning. And?
Whereas, under Newman's leadership, the Jewish Federation's financial resources have grown, and dollars have been strategically invested into programs that most effectively address the community's needs. And?
Whereas, Mr. Newman and his dynamic professional team set the goal of making the Jewish Federation a more inclusive place, and community engagement became one of their highest priorities. And?
Well, but one personal privilege, he was Buddy at the time, but he gave me my first job in the summer of 1966. And we've reconnected a couple of times, but it was the hardest job I ever had, and if you ever need, if you ever need an incentive to go to school so you don't have to work that hard, get a job up at Newman Paper, and you'll see real, real work. Thanks, Buddy. Whereas Bud Newman and his team dedicated themselves to building and strengthening partnerships with individuals and organizations throughout the community. And?
Whereas, in addition to Mr. Newman's leadership and commitment to the community, Mr. Newman and his family made a generous contribution to the Jewish Federation to assist in providing for the dozens of Jewish identity-building, educational, social service, and Israel-related programs and institutions, both local and global, that the Federation supports each year. And?
Whereas, Bud Newman is also committed to the city of Philadelphia and its thriving business community, as he is the president of Newman &amp; Company, a century-old family business located in Philadelphia that is Pennsylvania's leading recycler and supplier of rigid cardboard. And?
Whereas, Mr. Newman is also committed to the environment and providing for those in need, as he maintains a farm in New Hope, and distributes that produce from his farm to the Mitzvah Food Project to feed those in need. And?
Whereas, the Jewish Federation has thrived and expanded over the past three years under the outstanding leadership of Bud Newman. And?
We are so grateful for heroes like Mr. Newman and his selflessness and endless willingness to help others in the community at large have made a positive impact, and we honor him for his contributions to our city now. And therefore?
Be it resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes Bernard Bud Newman, immediate past president of the Jewish Federation of Greater Philadelphia, for his stewardship to the organization and his service to the Jewish community of Greater Philadelphia.
Thank you. And the Chair recognizes Mr. Newman for remarks.
Thank you all. Thank you, Council President Clark. Special thanks to Councilman Dom and all of those who co-signed. I certainly am humbled and grateful for this recognition. For me, it has been a wonderful experience, especially in the city of brotherly love, for which I believe so strongly we all are together. To have had the opportunity to be at the helm of the Jewish Federation has given me much greater insight into the needs of many more than Jewish people. This city has welcomed our Jewish Federation and all that it does with open arms. This city has superb citizenry. Its people are open and willing and anxious to do for each other. The world and the rest of our company, our country, needs to recognize that. This city council is an unusual group who are trying very, very hard to do that which we do microcosmically in the Jewish community, and to them I send and give my praise and thanks. For my wife Judy, standing behind me, I always recognize that I wouldn't be here without her, because without her support, it wouldn't happen. Without the support... Without the support of so many people in the Jewish Federation who are sitting to my left, who have taken the time of this day to be here as friends and professionals, my humble thanks to all of you. God bless you, and let us continue to work together.
Council biddies. Now, the next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. And Mr. Decker, would you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2, 307 of the Homeworld Charter, I am today, November 27, 2017, transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 170961, 170672, 170821, 170902, 170924, 170959, and 170960. And I am pleased to advise you that on November 27, 2017, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at its session on November 16, 2017. And I am submitting herewith for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution reappointing Bernie Presenica to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion, and a resolution reappointing J. S. Feldstein to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion, and a resolution reappointing Gary Brandys to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion, and a resolution reappointing Mark C. Reed to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Marion, and a resolution approving the fiscal year 2018 through 2019 rebuild project statement and budget pursuant to Bill Number 170206. project statement and budget pursuant to Bill Number 170206. And in ordinance authorizing the City of Philadelphia to enter into lease agreements with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, under which the city would lease to paid on a project-by-project basis, certain land and facilities in the Fairmont Park System, recreation centers, playgrounds, and branches in the Free Library of Philadelphia System, and which would permit paid to sublease such facilities on a project-by-project basis to other organizations. And in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 295 by striking from the City Plan Harner Street from Spring Lane to Manitana Avenue, and reserving and placing on the City Plan of right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes within the lines of Harner Street being stricken, and authorizing acceptance of the grant to the city of the said right-of-way, all under certain terms and conditions.
Mr. Decker, do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. And those messages will be printed in today's journal. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning I offered one resolution, and I'd like to speak on it very briefly after the introduction.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution calling on the Joint Committees on the Environment and Transportation and Public Utilities to hold hearings on the status of the City of Philadelphia's Vision Zero Action Plan, which is designed to reduce traffic crashes, improve performance of the street system, and promote active transportation, including bicycling within the city.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. While today I speak as someone who has always feared learning how to become a bike rider, I have always fully respected the physical fitness benefits it brings, and in 2014 approached this as a public policy matter because I embrace the environmental benefits as well. The record should reflect that interest on this council started in June 2014, where I introduced a bill authorizing our city to plan and operate a bicycle sharing program. Since then, we have passed collectively over seven pieces of legislation on or about bikes, bike sharing. And today, given several recent incidents in the news and having listened carefully to Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, learn what's happening in her district around bikes, it's time for us to reexamine with concerned stakeholders how we can learn to coexist and reduce the number of those that are being harmed by bikes. So I look forward to, I'm sure, robust discussion between bike coalitions, interested communities, including churches, who are trying to figure out how we can coexist with the good news around bikes and bike sharing. And so with that, Mr. President, I thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That will be on today's final passes' calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you very much. Today I introduce two bills on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance authorizing and approving the evaluation and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the financing of energy conservation and efficiency measures at the Philadelphia Museum of Art, Main Building, the Perlman Building, and the Roden Building. And in ordinance authorizing the City of Philadelphia to enter into a guaranteed energy savings contract for the implementation and evaluation of energy conservation and efficiency measures designed to reduce energy, water, wastewater, or other consumption or operating costs at specified city properties.
Those both will be referred to committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring, recognizing, and congratulating Haseem Hardman for being named the 2018 Rhodes Scholar.
And that will be on today's calendar.
And a non-privilege resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled to city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 28th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution also naming Almond Street between Vanango Street and Pickwick Streets as Storm the Heaven's Way.
And that will be on next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the President of the United States and members of the United States Congress and all relevant federal officials to continue to protect net neutrality and open Internet access.
And next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I offer one bill, two privileges, four non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 295 by striking from the City Plan Harner Street from Spring Lane to Manitana Avenue, and reserving and placing on the City Plan a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes.
Further to committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Ray Diddinger for being inducted into the Broadcast Pioneers Hall of Fame.
This week's calendar.
And a privilege resolution honoring the life of Sheila J. Taylor Hawkins for her dedication to the School District of Philadelphia and offering our deepest and sincerest condolences to her family, friends, students, and all those grieving her untimely death.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution reappointing Jay Feldstein to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Merion, and a non-privileged resolution reappointing Bernie Preznica to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Merion, and a non-privileged resolution reappointing Mark C. Reed to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Merion, and a non-privileged resolution reappointing Gary Brandys to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Lower Merion.
And those will be referred to committee. And Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
President, I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution supporting enactment of PA Senate Bill 501, a bipartisan effort to enhance protections for domestic violence victims by tightening restrictions on gun possession for persons subject to protective orders.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I introduce my non-privileged resolution, I just wanted to take a moment and recognize Palumbo Academy student Brian McCurdy. He attends Palumbo, which is in Councilman Johnson's district and lives in Councilman Heenan's district. He wrote to our office about the pros and cons about the sugary beverage tax, and Brian hopes to study business administration one day and open up his own business in Philadelphia. And he's here watching, as you like to say, our democracy in action, so welcome him today. And with that, I just have the one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you. Welcome.
A non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration dees conveying conditional fees simple titled to certain city-owned lots or pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements thereon situated in the 19th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution declaring December 1st World AIDS Day in Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Good morning, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Good morning, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubmanberger.
Good morning, Council President. I have one privileged resolution, and it is cosponsored by all members of Council, and I thank them all for that.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing Julia Reynolds Masterman School for their mock-election project that encouraged young people to find and use their civic voices in making a positive difference in their communities.
And that will be on today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Squill.
Thank you, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two non-privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution appointing Angela Bowie to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District, and a non-privileged resolution appointing Charles L. Richardson to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District.
And we refer to committee. And Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer one non-privileged resolution, and may be heard after the title is read.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
A non-privileged resolution requesting the Mayor of Philadelphia, the Pennsylvania General Assembly, and the Governor of Pennsylvania to act to restore control over the Philadelphia Parking Authority and its revenues to the City of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. In 2001, the General Assembly took over the city's on-street parking functions by taking over the Parking Authority. Simply, they changed the appointment of the Parking Authority Board from being that done by the mayor to that done by the governor. The reason that they used in court as to why they had the authority to take over a municipality's parking function, on-street parking function, which is unconstitutional according to Article 3, Section 32 of the Pennsylvania State Constitution, was the claim that they were held responsible for funding the School District of Philadelphia, and therefore, they had to fund the school through the Parking Authority. And so Act 22 required that the Parking Authority contribute $45 million per year to the School District of Philadelphia, which, if that had been done, would have provided over the last 16 years $720 million to the Philadelphia School District. It has not. After enacting Act 22, the General Assembly provided additional duties and responsibilities to the Parking Authority within the City of Philadelphia, and those funds go to a separate account, non-city accounts. We actually don't know how much money that is. In 2004, when the cooperation agreement which the city and PPA entered into was about to expire, the General Assembly passed Act 9, which extended the agreement by 10 years, taking it to 2004. Or taking it from 2004 to 2014. But in July 2012, the General Assembly passed the July 2012 statute, not extending the agreement, because the agreement was going to expire in 2014, but simply enacted legislation that the city's on-street parking would be administered and enforced by the Philadelphia Parking Authority. That is unconstitutional. And so since 2004 and into the future, the Philadelphia Parking Authority exists under the legal claim that it funds our school district. In June of 2018, the SRC will be dissolved. The city will be responsible for funding the school entirely with a shortage of state funds. With that, I would ask that the Governor, the Legislature, and our mayor act to return the administration, the control, and the funding of the Philadelphia Parking Authority back to the City of Philadelphia. I will note that I did introduce Bill 160844 to withdraw the city's authorization to the Parking Authority of the city functions, which we can do, but hopefully we can resolve this. On the other hand, I will say I will find it very difficult to approve any additional tax increases, property, business, or otherwise, if we have not made an attempt to regain control and revenues that are generated within our city to fund our school district and city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. And that will be on next week's calendar. Excuse me, that concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions. And our next order of business is report from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the Committee of the Whole reports out 12 resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Whole, to which is referred Resolution Number 170759, entitled a resolution appointing Drew Murray to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and Resolution Number 170806, entitled a resolution appointing Tina Biles-Williams to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and Resolution Number 170807, entitled a resolution appointing Maureen Anastasi to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and Resolution Number 171026, entitled a resolution appointing Don Clendenden to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and Resolution Number 171027, entitled a resolution appointing Jennifer Nagel to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and Resolution Number 171028, entitled a resolution appointing Ashley Peel to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and Resolution Number 171029, entitled a resolution appointing Carlos Sina to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and Resolution Number 171030, entitled a resolution reappointing Greg DeShields to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and Resolution Number 171031, entitled a resolution reappointing Romulo L. Diaz Jr. to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and Resolution Number 171032, entitled a resolution reappointing Robert Lane to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and Resolution Number 171033, entitled a resolution reappointing Joseph Zeritsky to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and Resolution Number 171035, entitled a resolution appointing Joseph Mead to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District. Respectfully reports, it is considered the same, and returns the attached resolutions to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These resolutions will be placed on our final passes' calendar in our next session of Council. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Finance, to which is referred Bill Number 160111, entitled, in ordinance, amending Chapter 12, 2800 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Administrative Adjudication of Parking Violations, to establish an amnesty program for fines, fees, and penalties on parking violations, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports, it has considered and amended the same, and returns the attached bill to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of Council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 160111.
Thank you. It has been moved and probably second that the rules of Council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160111. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez for a report from the Committee on License and Inspection.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspection reports four bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Licenses and Inspections, to which is referred Bill Number 160768, entitled, in ordinance, amending Subcode A of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled the Philadelphia Administrative Code, by amending Chapter 3, entitled Permits, by requiring a waste collection plan for construction, demolition, or alterations, and Bill Number 170898, entitled, in ordinance, amending Section A 301 of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Application for Permit, and Section 9, 1008, entitled Demolition Contractor License, by adding and amending certain provisions related to permits for demolition and the licensing of demolition contractors, and Bill Number 170903, entitled, in ordinance, amending Section B 3303 of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Demolition, by amending requirements regarding site grading and use of mechanical equipment, and adding requirements regarding materials chute, dust control fencing, and storage of demolition debris, and Bill Number 170955, entitled, in ordinance, amending Chapter 9, 3300 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Direction, Use, and Inspection of Tower Cranes, by revising requirements related to tower cranes and adding requirements regarding the... requirements related to tower cranes and adding requirements regarding the use and inspection of mobile cranes. Respectfully reports, it has considered and amended the same and returns the attached bills to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of Bills Numbers 160768, 170898, 170903, and 170955.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160768, 170898, 170903, and 170955. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the Committee of Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee on Economic, Commerce and Economic Development reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, to which is referred Bill Number 170849 entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 171603 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans, Contents, to require the provision of information relating to prior history of meeting goals established in connection with city contracts and the prior history of related corporate entities. Respectfully reports, it is considered and amended the same and returns the attached bill to Council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading of this bill this day, Bill Number 170849.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 170849. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar today. That concludes our report from Committee, and our next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from Committee was a suspension of the rules have been deemed to have had a first reading. All of those bills will be placed on our second reading and final passus calendar at our next session of Council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passus calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda, to consider the following bills on the second reading and final passage calendars. Bill Numbers 170683-A, 170902-A, 170819, 170878, 170924, 170363, 170713, 170723, 170820, 170823, 170824, 170825, 170826, 170851, 170855, and 170905.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda, to consider the bills just read by Councilman Heenan. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion carries, and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. The Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purposes of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passus calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions and bills being considered on the consent agendas today, the following resolutions and bills are being called up for the second reading and final passage calendars. Bill Numbers 1700171019, 171022, 171034. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
Thank you, Councilman. Before considering these bills and resolutions that are on the final passus calendar today, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you have an interest in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passus calendar today, if you have not already done so, you can sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will come to the middle of the chambers where there's a podium. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, on that device, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have thirty seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks. Mr. Decker, please call the name of the first witness.
Joe Dennehyl, commenting on 170683A and 170878.
Good afternoon.
Good morning. This is an official decree of the people and room man damnous quo warranto, and as such requires immediate action remedy. Every week, council, mayor, and others transfer private property to government, probably illegally. Last meeting, council spoke angrily about how it supports civil rights. Nothing is more primary than the God-given right to be secure in your houses, persons, and effects. Why is council, mayor, and others denying numerous constitution laws, failing to perform a known duty or task by denying due process and remedy? Did mayor recently call out President Trump as a bully, and his family didn't raise him right? Would a firefighter be proud of his son that would violate oath, constitution, and law to give upwards of $100 million taxpayer dollars, federal taxpayer dollars, to build a mall on my stolen home? PA Constitution, Article 1, Section 11. Every man for an injury done him in lands, goods, or person shall have remedied by due course of law, right, and justice administered without cost, denial, or delay. The FBI and Justice Department are required to investigate, prosecute, missing, misuse, hundreds of billions federal taxpayer dollars given to Philadelphia. The constitution and laws require immediate remedy of this breach of law, breach of clothes, breach of fiduciary duty. Your oath of office requires you to act or face prison. Forty-two USC 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, 1987, eighteen USC 241, 242, twenty-three eighty-one, twenty-three eighty-four. PA Constitution, Article 1, Sections 1 through 11, twenty-six, PACSA 703, 705, 708, 709, 712, 713, 716, and other laws listed in SCOTUS 158965, 141330, 144056 appear violated. I call for the federal and Commonwealth governments to perform their constitutional obligations, to investigate and prosecute all involved in the theft and illegal deed transfer of my home, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue, the denial of God-given forty-two USC 1982 property rights for twenty-three years. It's egregious, extraordinary, oath violating, and requires immediate remedy. A just government must obey the rule of law. This color of law government must have its charter to govern revoked until a constitutionally compliant government is installed. Public servants cannot refuse their sworn duty act, any more than a fireman can refuse to play the fire. The sovereign people require the constitution laws be enforced. Jail is required for all who violate oath or law. I remind council, it takes a lot of cooperation to create and allow monument.
Thank you for your testimony.
Clark King. Commenting on 171022.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, President. And good afternoon, Council members. Thank you for your time. I'd like to say that the, yes, am I on that? Oh, very good. Thank you. I'd like to start by saying that the attacks on the President are harmful, especially when they are irrational or dishonest. Having said that, I'd like to state my support for Councilman Johnson's resolution here. I believe that the Americans are facing a tax reform hoax. A functioning Congress would go after the missing and unaccounted-for stolen trillions of money which the Federal Reserve Bank has supported, not worked to give the almighty 1% and the great U.S. supertransnational corporations a tax break in the hope of job creation. The great U.S. corporations are now paying at an effective 2.5% to 3.5% tax rate. Job creation under this criteria should have happened decades ago. Congress appears to be still dedicated to the Wall Street system that drives 100 million Americans into poverty. Poverty is the actual national security crisis. Our U.S. fiat money system has been subverted and all but privatized. The Fed is still serving the banker speculators. The U.S. Treasury and the Fed must retrieve the unaccounted-for and stolen trillions with the goal of leaving the monetary financial system, stabilizing the United States, and funding the redevelopment of North America. Congress threatens the American standard of living in this tax hoax. It is not acceptable to permit the liquidation of Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security. Not acceptable to shrink or eliminate programs that serve the poor and the powerless. We still have ACA and the IRS hovering the Main Street economy. The Congress was supposed to untax the lower 80%. Instead, 1% wealth and finance have conducted and won the war against the people and the nation of the United States, and they can only look to increasing their wealth and power at the cost of the population. The Fed must be reorganized to fund the 50 states, infrastructure, and industry. The Republican Party is no longer the party of Lincoln, who bequeaths to humanity, a nation and government of, for, and by the people. However, in overplaying their hand and recklessly going after the population's economy, the leadership may have killed the Republican Party. The U.S. government must spend money into the Main Street economy so that people will be able to purchase a decent standard of living, run their businesses, and pay their debts and taxes. It's a national priority. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Peter Crawford. Peter Gofford, commenting on 170793.
Good afternoon.
Yes. Good afternoon, members of Council. I'm here to discuss Bill Number 170793, which is a rezoning bill for the South Kensington area. I'm here for myself as a resident of the 1300 block of Hope Street, and also on behalf of other residents of that street. The 1300 block of Hope Street is currently a three-story street, and we hope that City Council can keep it that way. In looking at the proposed bill, the bill proposes to keep most of the 1300 block of Hope Street as RSA 5, which has a 38-foot height limit, which is a positive thing. But three parcels are being designated CMX 3, which has no height limit, and those three parcels are 1309 North Hope, 1311 North Hope, and 1321 North Hope. And we are just hopeful that there can be an amendment on the floor to amend the maps for this bill, to keep those parcels also as RSA 5. And I'd also like to submit as written testimony a letter from the Townhomes of Liberty North, which is a community on the 1300 block of Hope Street.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, sir.
There are no other speakers in the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We now consider today's bill consent agenda. I would ask the clerk to read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill on the consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the bill will be immediately removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular final passus calendar. Mr. Decker, would you please now read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda? Councilman?
Yeah.
Councilman, Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am going to inform Council President that I must leave the chambers, head to my district on council business, and want to be reported for the record voting aye on all bills and resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. The record shall reflect that. Leave shall be granted. Mr. Decker.
Bill Number 170683A entitled An Ordinance Continuing the Port Richmond Industrial Development Enterprise Neighborhood Improvement District beyond its termination date in the area bounded generally by the north side of Allegheny Avenue, the west side of Memphis Street, between Allegheny Avenue and East West Moreland Street, the south side of East West Moreland Street, the property line of 3300 Agate Street, and the back of property is facing west along the east side of Tulip Street between West Moreland and Ontario Streets, the south side of Ontario Street, the west side of Tulip Street between Ontario and Tioga Streets, the north side of Tioga Street, the back of property is facing west on the east side of Tulip Street between Tioga and Vanango Streets, the back of property is facing south along the north side of Vanango Street, including the property located at 2301 through 07 East Vanago Street, and the back of property is facing east along the west side of Amber Street, as well as the properties located at 2066 through 80 East Tioga Street and 2082 East Tioga Street. Continuing the Port Richmond Industrial Development Enterprise, Inc., a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as a Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district. And Bill Number 170902A entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 14, 503 of the Philadelphia zoning code, entitled NCA Neighborhood Commercial Area Overlay District, by creating the East Mount area NCA overlay district and making related changes, all under certain terms and conditions, and amending the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Fayette Street, East Vernon Road, Mitchener Avenue, and Greenwood Street. And Bill Number 170819 entitled An Ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Gerard Avenue, Sixth Street, Burke Street, and Tenth Street. And Bill Number 170878 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Execution and Delivery of a Service Agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority relating to the financing of a home repair program for homeowners, approving the issuance by such authority of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness, including reimbursement obligations related to lines or letters of credit in one or more series to finance or refund in such program, and authorizing and approving the obligation of the city to pay in full when due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement. And Bill Number 170924 entitled An Ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land within an area bounded by Sheltonham Avenue, Ditman Street, Cotman Avenue, Ditman Street, Belly Avenue, Edmund Street, Cotman Avenue, Van Dyke Street, Robin Street, Torresdale Avenue, Deveraux Avenue, and Hegerman Street. And Bill Number 170363 entitled An Ordinance Establishing a No Truck Parking Regulation on the 1900 block of North 76th Street between Overbrook Avenue and City Avenue, both sides. And Bill Number 170713 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing 2601 Pennsylvania Avenue Condo Association to install, own, and maintain assigned encroachment at 2601 Pennsylvania Avenue. And Bill Number 170723 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Germantown Special Services District to install, own, and maintain various bollered encroachments at 57 West Maplewood Mall. And Bill Number 170820 entitled An Ordinance to amend Title 11 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Streets by revising certain provisions of Chapter 11, 600, entitled Construction Encroachments and Projections Over on and Under Streets, to amend the encroachment regulations for signage. And Bill Number 170823 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the relocation of the southerly curb line of Carpenter Street from Broad Street to 15th Street on City Plan Number 15S, a variable distance southwardly, so as to widen the cartway of said Carpenter Street. And Bill Number 170824 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of City Plan Number 359 by relocating the southwesterly house line and curb line of Byberry Road from the Roosevelt Boulevard to a point northwestwardly therefrom, and plotting on the city plan a right-of-way for sewer and drainage purposes contiguous with the northwesterly side of the Roosevelt Boulevard, and extending from Byberry Road southwestwardly to a right-of-way for drainage purposes. And Bill Number 170825 entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 2 of An Ordinance, Bill Number 130355, approved June 17, 2013, entitled An Ordinance Authorizing the plotting upon a portion of City Plan Number 58 of a two-feet-wide area for public pedestrian use, extending along the southerly side of Pearl Street from Tenth Street to a point approximately 138 feet westwardly therefrom, by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And Bill Number 170826 entitled An Ordinance Revising Parking Restrictions on Maplewood Avenue between Green Street and Wayne Avenue. And Bill Number 170851 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Changing of the Name of Convention Avenue from Health Sciences Drive to South Street to Health Sciences Drive. And Bill Number 170855 entitled An Ordinance Authorizing Passianke Avenue Revitalization Corporation to install, own, and maintain various planter and bike rack encroachments on Passianke Avenue, South 12th Street, Morris Street, and Watkins Street. And Bill Number 170905 entitled An Ordinance Amending Section 9, 203 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Street Vendors by prohibiting street vending on certain portions of Omni Avenue, and creating a special street vending district on North 20th Street between West Clarkson Avenue and Bellfield Avenue, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. These bills have been read on two separate days. The question for each bill now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker shall call the roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye. member is voting aye, and those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan is voting aye on all bills. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubenberger. Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. The majority of all members have been voting aye, affirm that for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. We now consider the resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, 171019.
A resolution calling upon the Managing Director's Office of Philadelphia to promptly comply with Council Bill 1156 passed on February 25, 1987 by, one, transferring fee, simple title, to 451 South University Avenue from the Department of Public Property to PIDC, and, two, requesting the PIDC transfer fee, simple title, to 451 South University Avenue and the land upon which it is located, to the consortium for nominal consideration as soon as practicable.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution 171019 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 171022.
A resolution calling on Congress to reject the GOP tax plans which eliminate or shrink programs that promote housing affordability.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
I say a few remarks, Council President, before I call for the adoption of the resolution.
You want to say the, you want to speak on?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yes, please.
Probably one of the hardest issues I work with, Council President, as relates to second councilmatic district, and that's the issue of affordable housing. As I welcome development throughout my councilmatic district, one of the key fights is making sure that long-term residents have the opportunity to stay in the homes in which they grew up, and then also making sure that my represent a district that reflects people's desire to live there as opposed to their checkbooks and/or their pocketbooks. Currently in Congress right now, we're dealing with a GOP tax reform plan that significantly will roll back on the level of support that is provided on a federal level, particularly the 4% low-income housing tax credit program that will allow us to develop affordable housing throughout the city of Philadelphia. Similarly, we have the elimination of, proposal of the elimination and cutback in the Community Development Block Grant Program, as well as Home Investment Partnership Program. You know, it's totally disheartening for them to even be considering rolling back such initiatives that provide resources that allow us to have vibrant neighborhoods throughout not only the city of Philadelphia, but also this particular country. And so I just want to ask all, aye for all my colleagues in support of this particular resolution. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, Resolution 171022 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 171034.
A resolution also naming Diamond Street between 23rd Street and 25th Street as Dawn Staley Lane.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and Resolution 171034 is adopted. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution calling on the Joint Committees on the Environment and Transportation and Public Utilities to hold hearings on the status of the City of Philadelphia's Vision Zero Action Plan, which is designed to reduce traffic crashes, improve performance of the street system, and promote active transportation, including bicycling, within the city, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring, recognizing, and congratulating Hesem Hardeman for being named a 2018 Rhodes Scholar, introduced by Councilman Greenlee on behalf of Council President Clark.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Ray Diddinger for being inducted into the Broadcast Pioneers Hall of Fame, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. And I was amazed that some of my millennial colleagues or close to it didn't know who Ray Diddinger was. Amazing. I move.
Do you? I'm just old.
I, in my generation, move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the life of Sheila J. Taylor Hawkins for her dedication to the School District of Philadelphia, and offering our deepest and sincerest condolences to her family, friends, students, and all those grieving her untimely death, introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
On behalf of my generation, again, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution declaring December 1st World AIDS Day in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing Julia Reynolds Mastaman School for their mock-election project that encouraged young people to find and use their civic voices in making a positive difference in their communities, introduced by Councilman Taubenberger.
The adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property. Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today, and I'd like to ask for any speeches on behalf of the minority, and speeches on behalf of the majority. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, when I started working in city council in 1990 at the tender age of 17, I had the great honor, this was right after going through the redistricting process, and the district had changed, and the 35th War and moving up into the Lower Northeast had become a part of the 9th Councilmatic District. And I didn't even know that even back then, you know, when you're 17, you don't really know who you are, you're trying to find yourself. But I had a deep appreciation for this gentleman who was, is what I often today refer to as a bit of the A-word. He was as authentic as they come. If you were going to do anything in the 35th War, in the Longcrest, Longdale area, if you wanted to work on the Fourth of July Parade, if you wanted to do anything there, you wouldn't do it without the support of George Nolte. Last night, I was in Longdale, Longcrest, Burl Home, Oxford Circle, and all of those community leaders were at a meeting that we had about the Old Fell School building last night. And as I talked to Bill Dabo, current leader there, Chris, and Phil, I said, you know, at least we had the opportunity to experience authentic leadership that didn't change. If he gave you his word, he meant it, but he didn't give it to you easy. If you were going to work in the community, it wasn't about a press release to get some credit for your work. If you were committed, you were going to do it at the table and where the community needed it, no matter who knew about what you were doing. And with that being said, I want to say special thanks to the family of the late George Nolte on his passing. When we found out about this issue, I was not here, Mr. President. If you recall, I missed city council's last session because I was representing yourself along with our council at the Conference on Middle Neighborhoods in Baltimore. And so I did not get the opportunity to send our regards to his family. But I want to say to the people of Longcrest and Longdale, you stand on strong shoulders with George Nolte. I was honored to have had the opportunity to work with him, and we're going to do our best to continue serving with the same model that he did authentically. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, Mr. President. We take great pride in our office of embracing young people, both high school students and college students, and work with them carefully to help them gain experience so that they can begin to build and grow careers. This morning, I want to share with my colleagues that we are experiencing the departure of Helena Rudolph, who is a Master of Environmental Studies freshman at the University of Pennsylvania. We want to thank her for her work, and we hope we've armed her with becoming the next environmental czar. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Please stand up. Congratulations, and thank you for your wonderful, wonderful support. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I thought I would share with my colleagues in the city council a little fact about me that you don't know, and that is that on Saturday morning, I biked from my home at 18th and Locust to the Navy Yard, and on Sunday morning, I biked from my home to Broad and Allegheny and had breakfast at my breakfast heaven, which I think is in Councilwoman Bass's district. And on Tuesday, I read about this biker at 11th and Spruce who was killed by this truck, garbage trash truck. And I spoke to Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner Richard Montanez this morning, and I know I joined with Councilman Squill, this is his district, and he's 100% behind this. We need to make sure these bike lanes that we put in are painted and maintained. I know there's a lot of issues, but at a minimum, I want to make sure we stress this, they all should be maintained and painted. If we put these in in '09 and haven't been painted for a while, that's really on us to make sure we maintain it. And I will say this, I'm a biker and I'm a motorist, and when you make a turn with a bike lane, it's treacherous because you don't know if the biker's coming up, and when you're a biker, you don't know where the car is turning. It's something we need to solve because I think it's a major problem. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention, but more importantly, I want to make sure we have all these bike lanes at least painted out so that you can at least see the lines. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to remind my colleagues, I think all of you have a flyer on your desk regarding tomorrow's polar plunge. We are working with the Special Olympics of Pennsylvania as Chair of the Council Committee on Disabilities. I am pleased to be plunging once again tomorrow along with my colleagues, Councilman Squill, O, Taubenberger, Jones, and Heenan, and the other council members that would like to join us tomorrow afternoon at 12 o'clock at Drexel University. You can join us in the polar plunge.
Thank you, Councilman. That concludes our speeches on behalf of the majority and minority, and with that, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that city council stand adjourned until Thursday, December 7, 2017, at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved in property. Second, that the council stand adjourned until Thursday, December 7, 2017, 10:00 a.m. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you all very much.